I'm not here. I got probably good guys.
Mindy, did you see the email I sent this evening?
Oh, no.
About the park. It's just an update to everybody so you can see what it looks like.
Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to Alma, College Township Hall. I'm calling to meet with Alma, College Council meeting your order October 7th, 2025. Please rise for the president.
I'm calling to the State Senator. And Julie Baldwin, for his stance on the actions under God invisible, will be here next tomorrow.
Local.
President Dyke.
Present.
President Pro Tim Stefler, present. Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Present.
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Do we have any additions or additions from tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by councilmember Snyder, supported by President Pro Tim Stefler, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Communications, we have none. Consent agenda. Meeting minutes from the October 7th, 2025. This is, yeah.
I just had one correction. On page three, item one, Homecoming Committee bylaws, the second line of the first bullet point. The very end of that line, I believe it should just be for council, not for annual council. You wouldn't be submitting a plan annually. It's just, it's a plan for council approval.
Anybody else on minutes? General fund. Major street fund. Local street fund. Parks and Rec fund. DDA fund. Capital project fund. Sewer fund. Water fund. Payroll register report. DPW activity report. Columbus, Alma, PD report. Oh, before that was the wastewater treatment plant report. I revert back to that. I apologize. Building report. Financial position report. Clerk treasury report. There's no commentary or questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by councilmember Snyder, supported by councilmember Feldman, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any public comment tonight on any agenda item? Being none, agenda item number one, set the homecoming date. If somebody here from the Homecoming Committee that wants to make a presentation?
I didn't realize I was making a presentation. We're requesting.
Well, there should be, we should be presented with some kind of plan that was discussed last time.
I did, um, did you get it in your mailbox?
I did. I did. On Monday, yeah. It's on documents under man. It's on our website, but I did not include it in this packet. It's in next month's packet.
I can remember what I think it was, just that we're requesting August 15th of 2026. The plan is to have things going on throughout Alma. We want to ask for the participation of several different committees as far as the churches, PTA, DDA. We want to include the whole community.
Since we don't have the written report, could you kind of give us a summary of some of the events that are going on? What committees are being involved? That sort of, just a.
Well, and that's just it. And this is what we would like to do, but we obviously, I, I'll be very truthful. I'm not going to put a lot of energy out there until I know I have the date because I'm not going to go to these people and say, you know, and try and, it takes time for all that. I'd rather go to them and say, hey, we got this going on August 15th.
That's not what we're asking. What we're asking is, so council has kind of a general overview of some of the things that might be going on. They could change. That's why it's a plan.
Oh, you mean event.
Event, yeah.
In the park. Possibly, possibly. Again, it's according to the date. There might be a civil war reenactment type. There might be something like that going on. Again, we, we were talking about maybe having an entertainment tent. I hate to call it a beer tent because there's, we're trying to do things that would be historically timed. You know, in antiques. Somebody mentioned square dancing or something.
Are you still following past homecoming events that happened in the past? Like in the two, 2015, 2010, some of the events that happened then? Are those still, is it going to be along that kind of line also?
There's going to be baby photo contests. There'll be, I'm trying to think of everything.
Class reunions.
Pardon?
Class reunions.
Class reunions, that's a major thing. Yeah.
Kim, where on documents under man is it?
It's, um.
It's under homecoming.
All the way at the bottom, homecoming, and it's the October 17th. Seventeenth minute.
Baby contest. There, there's not enough time to do a parade. There will not be a parade. But, uh, like in the past, they used to take all the antique quilts and display them in the store windows. We used to have, um, barbershop quartets walking around, period, you know, type of things going on. It's going to be more of a historical thing. But again, we, we don't have anything signed up until we can secure the date.
No, we understand that, but there, but there, there should be an overall reaching. These 15 things might be happening if the dates aligned and we get the people.
Absolutely.
And we're not asking, we're not asking you to lock those in. We're just asking you what some of those are.
Yes.
So we kind of have a, a general impact on what will be, the impact on the town that weekend when it happens.
Right, that, that was the point. You submit a plan as to what it is you want to do, that includes a date. We review that plan and, and, you know, subject to approval.
Did I do that with that paragraph?
Well, I don't know because I'm starting to try to find it for the very first time right now because it wasn't actually submitted to us.
It's in, it's under the minutes four.
Right, I'm, I'm getting there to the point of trying to navigate to it. We, we would have thought that we were going to get it and get a chance to review it.
And I guess the big thing is, is, um, obviously, again, once we have the date established, then everybody's going to start rolling. And I would say 30 days after we get that approved, I'll have some answers for you. I can absolutely write things down and tell you what's going on, or hopefully.
Mr. President, if you'd like, I have a written copy here I can give you. You could read it to the whole group if you'd like.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay. Thank you.
It was delivered at 4:30.
There's the minutes of the meeting and then their plan is on the back.
Basically, their plans are they would like to have events happening through Alma, period, appropriate events, possible reenactments, possible entertainment tent. We'd like to invite different organizations to participate and run their own type of events, maybe fundraisers, historical exhibits, baby, baby photo contests, class reunions. All the, all these ideas and plans are halted until a date can be secured. So that's their submitted plan.
And there's a budget on the next page.
And the budget currently would be from savings. They've got 20,000 in savings, activities, 7,000 entertainment, 3,000 site. What would site be?
If you threw out town.
5,000. Can you give me like an example of you're spending 5,000 on a site for what?
Um, again, if there, say if it was Friday night, if there was the, we haven't really discussed this, but there used to be opening ceremonies and there would be pie and coffee and stuff like that. But as far as a site, I think that just means if, if it's at the entertainment set, uh, tent, I, I don't know what to tell you. It's.
Advertising 2,000 and the all school reunion 3,000.
Well, I know we had a lot of back and forth about the word comprehensive. Yeah, you know, it does, comprehensive was an argument because it's, you know, what is the definition of comprehensive? But this is so sparse, it's kind of hard to understand what we're really planning here. I mean, even when you give us a proposed budget to approve, we don't know what the 5,000 for the site is or how it would work. I can imagine that there wasn't a great detail conversation to flush out this budget nor the plan. The meeting lasted, what, all of six minutes? I mean, it wasn't so.
But I told you it was going to be very short because all we had to do is to get this approved so that we could present it tonight. We, I mean, we just barely got together and we had to be out of there by 2:30 because we had other appointments.
I understand, but I also, at the same time, I told you what the, what the expectation was as I reiterated what we discussed at the last meeting, which is it's supposed to be a plan of what the events are supposed to be. It doesn't need to be rock solid. You don't need to have commitments. You don't need to have them signed up. It is, we would like to do all of these things so we can have an idea of what it would look like. And if that needed to change, then it needs to change. But this doesn't really give us much of a picture. It's, it's incredibly vague, right? I mean, it's, it's vague.
No, it's not. What is missing? As far as the budget goes, you guys said yourself, all you have to do for a budget is take 2015, put it on a piece of paper and change the date. That was commented at the last meeting.
That may have been one of the comments, but I don't agree that that's how this board votes on approving budgets. Is to take the last one and carbon copy it and change the date. The budget is based on what you actually want to do, which your actual expenditures are.
But until I, I can meet with these people, until we can contact, um, the Historical Society and see, we have to see how much that is. Once we decide if there's going to be an entertainment set, uh, tent and what's going to go on in there? Are we going to do karaoke? Are we going to have a band? Are we going to do the root band? Are we going to have square dancing? How, how can I put a price on that when I don't?
I think your argument is that a budget is premature, which I would wholeheartedly agree.
Yes.
Budget wasn't a requirement. Plan was. Plan was.
The plan is, is, I don't know what else I could tell you.
Events happening throughout Alma.
Yes.
Entertainment tent, historical exhibits. I don't, what's historical exhibits?
I just said in the, in the park, they're talking about having a reenactment.
Okay.
There's a possible setup of an 1800s village.
Okay.
Again, when I say to reach out to the community, talk to the PTA, what would you guys like to do? What, what can you see, you know, and then see what they do? And this is what we've done in the past 40 years. You get together, you have these meetings, you, you see what the general public wants. It's not something that three of us sit there and go, we're going to do this, so we're going to do that. No, we all get together and we converse and we make plans as a community. And that's, that's the hard part of you people who write the bylaws and you're trying to control this. And I appreciate your position and why we have to do this nowadays, but you don't have a clue how it's run. I can't tell you what the PTA is going to have an idea to do. Yes, in the past, the PTA has been involved. The track, I don't know their proper titles and everything, but somebody would run a 5K, but I couldn't tell you who that is. The church, they might have a pancake breakfast. I don't know. They might have, um, a concert day. I think one year they had a contest of who the best singer was or that. They had a tour of the church one year.
And none of these are on here because we don't have a plan really yet.
Can I interrupt here for a second? I, this is my opinion, but I feel like we're kind of in this loop here where they can't plan if they don't have dates. You want to plan before you approve a date? Like, I mean, I think, I don't see the harm and they're coming to us and saying, this is the date. We want to start planning. We can approve it. I feel we could approve a date without seeing a fully crafted.
Right, that just wasn't the consensus, consensus of council at the last meeting.
I don't really recall that being.
Well, you can watch the meeting because we said it at least six times. I checked again today.
They've given us some details here. I'm, I'm comfortable setting a date with the information we have.
I agree with Mindy. I think we need to give the Homecoming Committee time to plan. I would like them to come back. I, I would like to ask, when do you think you'd have a more detailed plan that you should give back?
I'll tell you, if I get the date tonight, I'll be back here in a month and I could give you some details. It, you know, I, I could probably give you at least a list of what we've contacted and what the ideas are. But like I said, I don't have time to run around town and talk to all these people and then go, by the way, I don't have a date, but I'll get back with you. And I, I think everybody can appreciate that. How can you plan anything in your life if you don't have a date?
I'm of the opinion we should lock down a date and then request a more detailed, um, plan in a next meeting or two meetings from now. My other, my other question, is it, is it just a Saturday or is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or is it?
I think, again, it was going to wait and see what the response is of the community as of right now. In the past, Friday night was always opening ceremonies. And then Saturday was the big day where everything took place. And then Sunday was just kind of, sometimes there was a church service and, um, I remember one year we had, um, a baseball team, the old style baseball team played. But usually Sunday was just like wind down. I think the 5K was on Sunday too. But, um, again, right now it's Saturday. Saturday's the big day. Now whether we will have opening ceremony, we'll see what the response is. And as the community gets together and everybody, if it, if we have a huge response, AML for it. Let's do an opening ceremony Friday night and, you know.
Anybody else on council? I understand your position, but if they've been doing this for 40 years and it's in the bylaws and we're trying to follow the bylaws, and I'm not trying to be difficult.
I think you are.
Was that?
I think you are.
Well, I think you guys are coming unprepared, unprepared because you could have took 25 minutes, sat down as a group with, with Paul's vast history of stellar history of serving this community, both at the school board level, at the township level and, and his stellar professional career.
What is not on that list?
Paula, it's not complete. It's not even close to complete. It's not, it's not a list even. If I was asking for money outside of this body, I would have to have a 90% plan before anybody would give me any money to do anything.
Okay, we don't have to approve the budget tonight.
I, I understand and I agree that we need to fix a date. Now personally, I don't think we need to have a date to make a plan. I think you can make a plan irrelevant of a date.
No, you can't.
Can you ever plan a wedding?
Yeah.
Without date?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, the date got moved up about nine months and it still happens. So I agree, we should fix a date. They, they know what date they want, fix it, but I think we should have a plan ASAP. I, I don't think it's a stretch to have a clear plan.
And I, you guys are the ones that wanted a plan and a budget tonight. I'll allow it was a date and I'll tell you in a month, then I'll give you a budget and I'll give you a plan.
We didn't ask for a budget tonight. No one asked for a budget tonight.
Yes, you did.
No, we did not ask for a budget tonight. We asked for a plan. And we were even clear that the word comprehensive could be, could be shot away. It needed to be a list of here's the type of events we want to do. Here's the type of things we want to do. Give it, give a concept. You need to actually flush it out of a concept and that would include a date so that we could review it, consider it and approve the date with the plan, not just a date with a very vague list. That's, that's what was requested. And, and I understand that you feel the date must come first and then apply events to that date, but we don't even know what you have in mind for that date.
But it's not even so much that. It's the fact that you don't understand that it's a group of people that come together. We sit down and we discuss what we would like to do. Somebody will say, hey, I know so and so from PTA. I'll talk to them and see if they want to get involved. Hey, I know the four age group. Let's see if they want to bring their pets in. Let's, and everybody, this is something that if one person just doesn't do, this is a community event. And we come down to it, we, we sit down. Your, oh, so many people and this, not your family, and now your family. But I can tell you, a lot of the families, the elders of this community, the Hops, the bishops, the Powinski's, all of us, we got involved and we run this town and we run it. And, and just like I said, we get together, we have these meetings and there would be 10 to 20 people. And every time we got together, hey, that's a good idea. Can you find out more? And it wasn't a designated person. Nobody had a title. And we just went about and did what had to be done. We'd come back, we'd report it, run with it, go with it. And yeah, Tracy and I would do a parade. Somebody else would be in charge of pies. You just don't understand. You don't understand how it runs and you're asking me to put the cart before the horse. And I gave you ideas on that piece of paper. I wasn't trying to be smart. I wasn't trying to be snip, but I'm telling you, without, I don't, I'm not asking for a budget right now. I can tell you, once things get rolling, how much money we need for this and how much money we need for that. And then I could break it down, but you guys are asking for things and you did ask for a budget. You did ask for a plan. That's my plan. I don't know how to break it down. I mean, how many, how much details can I go into? The baby contest, to do a baby contest, I have to go to vicars. I have to see if they're interested. No doubt they're going to have to meet with somebody. They're going to say, what's it entail? Then we're going to have to turn around and find out if there's enough time, what, and all the details on that. If there's a car show, and I don't want a car show, but if we do have, it would be strictly antiques. If there was, um, if there was farmer garden, I would like to see them do their customer appreciation day that weekend. Have something going on there. You could do, um, the, the park board, see what the park board wants to do, see what the lions want to do. But everybody, anybody who's older than a certain amount of time, and not this generation, but the people that remember 2015 or previous homecomings, they know what it's about. And something went on in this whole town. Even the bank would get involved. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. So you guys don't have a clue because you have that.
They're still going to be fighting whether there's about a date come August.
I, I don't understand.
They don't want to be involved.
I don't understand why you guys are against this and giving us so much trouble.
In the last four minutes that you've been speaking, you listed more events that you are interested in doing than you put on your list in your six-minute meeting. You could have given us a list of the things that you want to do, which you just demonstrated as possible to give a list of things that you wanted to do. But aside from, I do believe we all just let you speak and I just have my say too. Just want to have some back and forth, okay? My only point is, is you could give us a list of the things that you wanted to do. They don't have to be set in stone. I know that you would have to go and actually make arrangements, but it would have given us some idea. And I think you've also heard that we are willing to try to work with you to give you a date, but we wanted a plan and an idea of what it was supposed to look like. And what we're trying to do is be clear about what it was we were asking for. We spoke about it at length at our last meeting and when you and I spoke on the phone about it last week, I said the same thing. It's supposed to be a list of the types of events that you want. And as much as you keep reminding us, for the decades that this has been done, even you told me this when I very first started asking about the history of it, there is a list, and many lists of previous events that you could have looked to, to give us an idea of previous events. But it's not up to us to decide which ones you guys have in mind to do. It's up to you to tell us which ones you have in mind to do.
That you had that list. You took that paperwork from us that day. I do not have that list and that schedule of events that happened in 2015.
What paperwork is it you think I took?
2015, we handed over, um, brochures and that to you.
No, you told me that they were at the office.
I think both sides have made their points. Do we have a motion to approve the date?
Well, I think as far as our discussion here tonight, I understand the concerns about have, wanting a plan and having a detailed plan, which we need to.
Well, it's based, it's based by where we're at. And I've said this previously, both the village and the Homecoming Committees in the past were negligent in following the previous bylaws. That's why the new bylaws were written. So there's, um, so there's transparency on all ends. I don't read online, but I've been sent stuff online and it's already being talked about, about transparency. And it's being, it's being, um, looked through the mic, the magnifying glass. So every step the Homecoming Committee makes and the Village makes and.
Oh, that guy's never going to stop. He's never going to stop.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter because the, the Village and the Homecoming Committee are at risk if we don't follow the bylaws. That's.
What didn't I follow?
What's it? We've already talked about it, so it, we're just talking circles on that, so.
So I, I have just a question for council. Is there, and staff, are there currently any concerns with the weekend of August 14th through the 16th? I think that's the crux of this issue is of setting a date. Are there conflicts? Is there a reason why we could not hold an, an event on that weekend? Nothing that we're aware of?
I mean, the St. Clair Project might cause an issue, but we don't know that for a fact, but.
Um, okay. I mean, I think that's the important issue, right? Is I, I can't see that a schedule of events would impact our decision on allowing an event to proceed.
I think the, and, and this isn't to open up the debate. I think the spirit of the, having a plan in place was so council, when making the decision on the date, could weigh the impact on town of that day. I mean, I mean, was that not the intent and spirit of the Homecoming Committee of why that was written into the bylaws?
Then why wasn't that explained to me that it had to be so detailed?
I don't think we need to go back to that stuff. I think we're weighing whether or not this date is appropriate, the, the date that they're requesting so far. I think there is a very clear expectation that a detailed plan is expected from this council within a month. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay. With that understanding, I'll make a motion that we set the date for homecoming weekend to be August 14th through 16th, 2026.
Support. Motion, uh, motion by President Pro Tim Stefler, um, supported by Councilmember Powell to approve the homecoming date as stated on the record, August 15th, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Aye, nay? Um, the motion passes five to two. And um, I want to clarify, my vote was not in opposed to the date because I support the homecoming and I support the date, but I believe for transparency, the bylaws do need to be followed. So, um, moving on to agenda item number two, park board appointment.
Kim, you wrote the memo. Do you, would you like me to explain?
Sure.
Okay. Um, well, you can see in Kim's memo here that we have a request for Melissa Schneider to serve on park board, which she already has faithfully for several years. You can see on her application. It just recently came to our attention when we were reviewing the ordinance in that the township and the village both need to appoint a member to park board, and it does not appear that that had been followed. So we made a decision to set our books right and get that done. And so we have Melissa submit her application to become the official village reference then, representative on the park board. Melissa, if you wanted to come up and say anything, please.
So like she was saying, the bylaws, the way that they are written for the park board and the township and the village, one person from your governing body is appointed for both the village and the township, and then in addition to that, each respective body will appoint one resident to the the park board. And then, so there will be four of us, and then we will then appoint people. The last time I was appointed was by the park board over four years ago. According to the bylaws, that's not really, I don't think how things were supposed to be ran. And I'm not even sure who was appointed to the park board from the village council last. So we're just trying to make things right, really trying to, I think, put more effort into organizing things to make sure they're run better, and there's just more consistency. So that's, I've I've been on the the park board for over four years. I'm probably one of the longest standing members other than Roberta. And I I'm also, I've been the treasurer for the last two years. I really enjoy being on the park board. I love being able to help plan and be a part of community events for all ages. I think that our current park board is doing, trying to make an effort to revamp the park, come up with different events. It's, it's underutilized. So I would hope to continue to serve for the next three years at least.
Does anybody have any questions, forums? Do we have a motion?
Oh, hold on. Not before you do that. I have to, a conflict of interest, I have to abstain. Reasons are obvious. That's my wife. I can't, I cannot vote. Just I need to follow our rules and procedures as well. Have to declare the conflict. Go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. I'll make the motion that we appoint Melissa Schneider to the Almont Community Park Board for a term of three years.
Support.
Motion by President Proctor Steffler, supported by Councilmember Powell to appoint Melissa Schneider to the park board for a three-year term as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, emergency ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash one.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance you, as a council, have voted on for many years. It's designed to control Devil's Night and Halloween with a curfew. There's actually a state law that already exists that covers it. But last year, we discussed this. Council said, we still like it in place. It's a good message. And I couldn't agree more. So it's back in the pack again for approval.
Questions from council? All their attention motion?
I'll make the motion to pass the emergency ordinance number two zero two five dash one, emergency curfew. Support.
Motion by Councilmember Feldman, supported by Councilmember Schneider to approve a draft emergency ordinance number twenty five, twenty twenty-five dash one. Ordinance is roll called, right?
Yes, but we've never done a roll call for the emergency ordinance.
But now?
Roll call.
You can do that. Give me one second.
Did you forget our names?
Yes. No, it's just the order. Miller.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Steffler.
Aye.
Feldman.
Aye.
Glasser.
Aye.
Dyke.
Aye.
Motion passes through a roll call. Agenda item number four, general complaint policy. Manager Kirbison?
Yes, this is the policy that we originated, oh, probably now six weeks ago, maybe eight weeks ago, to address anonymous complaints to the village. It evolved into a general complaint policy. We had council review it and discuss it. They sent it back to our attorneys with some questions and issues with the policy as presented. Those are clearly outlined and addressed in the attached response from the attorney, and we're back here again to discuss it. I don't know if it, because it's a policy, I don't know if it falls under your first reading rules and regulations, but that, of course, is up to you. Kim says no. She would like to do a roll call vote.
Counsel.
I thought these were good changes. I I really didn't have anything further on my end.
Anybody else?
So just to clarify, we're going to have two different email addresses, right?
Correct.
Okay. I recognized everything else as things that we had talked about to change before.
I'd like to ask a general question on the spirit of this policy before we go forward. It was my understanding before we moved down this path that anonymous complaints were not very highly considered. This is, you know, significantly better than that, and I don't disagree with any of it. But I just wanted to remember or remind you that that was the origin to this was, oh, if it's anonymous, we don't care. We're not going to bother. So.
But I think because the the subject matter was the importance. Is it anonymous complaint about my neighbor? Or is it, I have a complaint about somebody's conduct at a village? So I think, I think that was the main reason for distinguishing between.
That and council's previous policy is stated in the minutes that we wouldn't accept or acknowledge anonymous communications. Because that was the only part that was actually in writing, on documents demand, in minutes, is that council refuses to accept or acknowledge and make part of its communications packets anonymous communications. If you want to write us a letter, you get to sign your name to it, or we won't acknowledge it. That's not to say that complaints across all village-wide possibilities are to be ignored. And that's what we were trying to distinguish and set ourselves apart from. If you want to write us a letter, they expect us to read as part of our communications. You have to sign your name to it. That does not mean that if you have a complaint in various other circumstances, that it would go ignored. I I feel like that was a major part of it, too. This goes further to indicate that we will allow anonymous complaints. We, if you, if you wish to do so, we encourage it, but we cannot guarantee your anonymity just as a result of the circumstances. We'll do everything we can in our power not to disclose it. We cannot guarantee your anonymity. I feel as though it's as fair as possible while walking that line of not discour, not discouraging it, allowing it, but can't guarantee it. I think the only concern I had is about the, some of the logistics here. I'm fine with the language. The. So the idea is that we would create two new email addresses, that one that goes directly to the village manager and one that goes directly to the village council president for these various types of complaints, right? It it not your current email address, not the president's current email address, two entirely new ones, correct?
I thought they were our existing email addresses, and we're publishing it that way.
Yeah, well, that doesn't work for me because the problem is is that the email addresses don't stay the same. So you have to realize that. So for example, Mr. Dyke's email address is going to be his name, right? So in the event that he's no longer president, it's going to start going to him. It needs to be a set email address that is accessible only by the village president, a village manager email address that is accessible only by the village manager, but they need to be distinct from the ones they're using right now. You know, for example, I inherited my dad's village email address, right? I mean, they're not, they're not always going to stay the same. If you want to make sure it's going to the right person, imagine these complaint forms, all these, they'd have to be updated every single time you have an election, and it would have to be immediate, or it's going to end up being sent to the wrong person in the wrong place. If we set it up as a distinct email address, which is only accessible, that maybe works. But otherwise, I mean, and we haven't been, well, regularly very, very quick about updating all of our letterhead, web pages, all these, every time we have an election or something changes. And I just, I just think that that's, that's a recipe for failure on this part. It's where the logistics breaks down. If you make a, two new complaint email addresses, and those are only accessible by the two parties that are going to have it, you never have to change that. You can just change, hand over the credentials to each whoever the the person is. We never have to change those email addresses again in the future. The complaint forms wouldn't have to change. The listings wouldn't have to change. It could stay static. You would only have to turn over credentials appropriately. And those credentials can change each time there's an election to make sure that it's secure. I mean, it's a much, much safer way of handling those logistics. I guess my only other concern would be what the complaint form this policy is based on is going to look like, too. We don't have the actual complaint form they're going to fill out yet, correct?
Do we?
We originally had that.
It's just a complaint.
Uh, well, this quite clearly says there's going to be a PDF complaint form. It's in the policy itself. It says there's going to be a complaint form that they, they must fill out. If they must fill it out, I'd kind of like to know what it looks like.
We, we have that in the original draft, I thought, but that, I didn't catch that. So if that is something you want to cause to table this till the next meeting so we can get it added, that's fine.
With the separate email accounts, I think that makes sense.
We brought up the form at the last meeting, and that we were redirected to the OEO inspection slip, which I think is insufficient.
Inadequate.
And.
That's the.
That's a, that's a different.
That's a code.
That's a whole different.
Yeah, but that's what we were, we were.
We'll bring both forms.
Okay, right. Right. Councilmember Powell brought that up last time, that we would like to know what the form looks like. We were directed to the OEO. We said that's insufficient and does not meet the standard. And so why we're saying we, we need to know what a form would look like for this complaint.
Okay, so bullet point clarifications on consensus. One, everybody's good with the way this policy is written. Two, we're in consensus that independent email boxes for the village president and village manager to receive complaints is, is logistically and security smart.
I think it's unnecessary, but I will go with consensus.
And and number three, we're going to table this till next meeting until we have a view of the form. We're all in consensus with that. And we will table, we will table the general complaint form until next meeting. Anybody else, any other of those council members have any comments on this subject? Being none, it's now time for public comment for any non-agenda item. Do you have anybody with public comment?
My name is Stacy.
Please, please come to the podium.
Maybe a little premature. I'm not really sure. I came to you a little while ago and was introducing an idea of a living history village. And I wanted to do it during the Heritage Festival with my conversation with this gentleman over here. I have chosen that it's not going to happen. It was a crazy day. We had a huge success with our tours at the museum, and the Living History Village is, was now one of those in limbo waiting for a date. And so first of all, I want to thank you for, for allowing us to choose that date because I have a whole line of people that I can now say, yes, it is August fifteenth weekend. But with that, I'm in a, a little bit of a pinch because now I, before I was working with the DDA, I don't know who I'm working with now and who I'm supposed to report to. Is it something where I just work one-on-one with the park board? Or do I bring my concerns to your board? I'm not sure who I talk to now. Do I let you know what the full plan is when I have it, or?
What is the idea and where is it going to take place? I guess is the first question we need to know.
The Living History Village was going to possibly take place at the park board, which I went to the park board as well as the DDA, as well as the township and the village boards. And I was told that it would be with the DDA. But now that it's not a part of the Heritage Festival, it's going to be part of the homecoming weekend. Who do I report to the events that are going on, and do you need a plan from us? Who do I work with, with that?
If you want it to be one of the events of homecoming, you need to meet with.
Well, it, it's, it's a standalone event, but I needed it to ride along with another event. And so when, when I was talking to the village office about when homecoming was going to be, who is going, what, what parties were going to be on it, then it changed whom I reported to. So if that is what you would like me to do, and do you want me to create a separate report?
I, I don't think it's within our jurisdiction. This is, it, it's just a suggestion.
I don't think it's in our jurisdiction, but if it's, if it's in, in concurrence with homecoming, quite in the park.
It also, the park, it sounds like.
You'd also, you'd also, you'd also want to keep the park board in.
If it's, if it's.
It would be those two, it would be those two minutes.
Okay, well, again, I thank you for the date because that's what I needed to take to the park board to even make this go forward with a different date. So I thank you for that, and I will not bother you about the weekend. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment on any non-agenda item? Paul?
I think everybody's seen the comment that supposedly I said that I knowingly went against the OMA rules. And I wanted to be known that that was not, that that was taken totally context. I have discussed it with Dave. I've discussed it with Randy Jorgensen. And we'll see what this week's paper brings. But yeah, Stephen and I talked about it.
Sorry.
I just thought you'd know that it wasn't true. We had a conversation on the side, and that's what it was pertaining to.
Haven't gotten to my comment yet.
Yep.
Well, I didn't know if you were going to, so I.
We made my work. I, I think there was three of us that were planning to set the record straight.
I appreciate that.
So anybody else or comments or for public comment on any non-agenda item? Being none, we will go, we have no open discussion tonight. Council manager comment, Manager Kirbison?
Yes, I'll give you a couple of updates. We were in court this week regarding several, seven different old light violations. We prevailed on all seven. We rewarded our, our fines. But in the end, we have the now court order to be able to correct the problems and move forward. So I'll end up sending a letter to the property owners that are left saying, you have till the end of the month, or we will hire a contractor and take care of this problem. the end of the month or we will hire a contractor and take care of this problem and it'll be placed on your taxes. So it was a successful day. It took a little while, but we were there and got things taken care of. The OEO did come and testify at the, the court, so that was good. I don't know if you know, she just had her knee redone, so she was convalescing, but she did make it there. MDOT has told me, told, not in writing, told me that they will have the light finished by Halloween. They did today send me a note. Actually, they're asking to get together with Angela and I regarding the replacement of more sidewalk than they were planning. They're gonna pull more flags than they have originally pulled so they can try to meet to some ADA requirements more thoroughly. And they were worried about the color of the concrete, so they were uh going to meet with Angela today uh on a Zoom meeting to confirm the, the color. So we're fingers crossed that will be done by Halloween and cleared out. We are considering spending some money to clean our sludge tank. I know it's exciting stuff, but we actually did that last year, thoroughly cleaned the tank, inspected it, but we have since had an issue with the plant that required, that brought some material into a pump. We need to find out where that came from, so we're considering redoing that. It could be as much as uh over, just a little over five thousand, so I'll have to come back and get permission from the council to do that as we, as we get closer to that project. We have been prepping, uh updated our detailed list and are finally ready to do final negotiations with the operators' union to close the contract or get the contract together for our DPW. And the DPW hired a new person this week, so we're fully staffed in that department. Excellent candidate with tons of a background and a few licenses that we are happy to have. And he started and was introduced to Kim today, but I wasn't here when he was in the building, so. And that's it. Uh, I do want to touch base on something. I don't know the procedure, but you, I gave you a copy of the minutes that we got from the homecoming committee. They're, they're inaccurate in one way and I don't know how we will address that as we go forward, if we make a separate letter of comment or what. But anyway, I, I want you to know that they're not officially submitted because you didn't get them in a, into your formal packet, they're just on our communications thing, so. And that's it.
Chief Pauls, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Um, Ms. Keater? Mr. Glasser? Councilmember Feldman?
Nope, Dale answered it.
As was previously alluded to, um, and I did promise I would address this because I think it's the right thing to do. On the front page of the Tri-City Times on October fifteenth, uh, they covered um our meeting um two weeks ago. That article uh misquotes, mischaracterizes and falsely alleges that our homecoming committee committed an OMA violation and that they admitted to it. That's blatantly untrue. For clarification of the record, the violation was of our bylaws, not an Open Meetings Act violation. The meeting was publicly posted, it was accessible to the public, there were meeting minutes, those meeting minutes were published. It was not an OMA violation, it was a violation of our bylaws. Those things are very different, and so we need to be very clear that that's what was discussed, that's what took place on the record. Anyone who watches it can fairly clearly tell what the question and answer was that was going back and forth between myself, Ms. Alfonsi. We were discussing bylaws. Bylaws are not part of the Open Meetings Act. We do not pass state laws here. We pass our local ordinances, more specifically, this was our bylaws. So just to make sure that that clarification was made for the record. That's all.
And Councilmember Glasser, I should, I should have addressed you as council member, not, not Mr. Glasser, so I'm sorry about that. President Proton Steffler, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Powell.
Also.
Councilmember Miller.
Nothing tonight.
I just wanna reiterate that what Stephen said, that Paula did and the committee did not violate an OMA, they were misquoted in the Tri-City Times, so um that should be clarified publicly. So with that, we are adjourned. Students, you can come up and get your papers signed.
There is no correction in this piece.